Jermaine standing for the flag. Pleasure to lead him.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma- Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll when you get a chance. Okay.
I was about to say, you want me to do it?
(laughing).
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
I think he's calling in.
He's supposed to be joining us.
Yeah, he's calling in.
Via telephone. I'll keep going. Mr. Van Houten?
Here.
Mrs. Feeback?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Hey, Brian, are you there?
He's there, I don't know what's happening.
Okay. Well, we'll figure it out. All right. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. We didn't have any requested changes or additions. Are there any comments or questions on that? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Are we not amending seventeen?
Are we removing seventeen? Nope.
Are we changing it?
We're gonna use it more of a discussion item. We do have an actual portion.
Yeah, so, for what it's worth, seventeen is considered approval of a Water One agreement. We're not ready to bring you the contract yet, but we are gonna be asking for some authority for possible expenses and kinda discuss what that looks like. So, you won't be asked to approve the end-all, be-all of it, but we're gonna give you as much information as we can. There's some timing stuff that we've gotta do it tonight, so.
All right, sounds good.
Uh, move, we approve the agenda. Second.
Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. Uh, the first person on the list is Thomas Robinson.
So, my topic of conversation is, uh, item number-
Sorry to interrupt you, if you could state your name and your address.
Uh, Thomas Robinson, five oh one, South Jefferson.
Thank you.
Spring Hill. Uh, item number eleven, consideration ordinance, twenty twenty five zero three. Um, I live across the street, catty corner from this residence, and we participated in the protest petition against this, um, for a number of reasons, for our own personal reasons and our own safety concerns as well in the neighborhood. I noticed here it says convalescent homes, uh, congreg- care family facilities and retirement housing. Uh, Springfield Elementary School is just a handful of blocks back on the street from this, so I'd be very concerned if convalescent homes or any of that kinda category of housing was approved for someone to stay in that residence. I also believe the residence really isn't appropriate for a multifamily home. Um, I think it could potentially depreciate the value of the residents around our houses that we've poured a lot of money into since moving there in twenty nineteen. Um, so, concerns of depreciation, concerns of nuisance or annoyance due to increased foot traffic, both pedestrian and traffic, vehicular traffic. Um, so, we just wanted to, uh, kinda have our voices heard on this, is that we've went door-to-door to a bunch of our neighbors in the neighborhood and vicinity of the facility, and it's my opinion that there's a vast majority of residents that are immediately adjacent to the residence that in consideration that are against this, and so that was just primarily what I wanted to voice to this council, and my opinion based on where I live in proximity to this, and, um, also on the, the meeting we had, um, for the, uh, consideration to bring this to council, the zoning meeting, um, just felt like there was just no consideration really brought to questioning of like what the people felt that live around this facility. It was all about, is this a good business for the city? Is this, is this, uh, you know, what will this do? And it was like, it just felt like there wasn't much consideration put into actual feelings of the people that, uh, attended the meeting and live adjacent to this residence. So, I think that is the majority of, I don't wanna speak on behalf of other people that wanna speak, but I think that was the majority of why these people came to that opinion as petition, so, um, that's, that's all I had to say, and really appreciate you letting me a lot to speak.
Thank you very much. Next person on the list is Jack Wagner. I believe it's Wagner. It looks like a G.
Thank you for giving me a moment.
Sure.
My name's Jack Wagner, I live at four oh one, South Jefferson Street. I'm here to speak on the same, um, issue that the previous person spoke on. Um, I did come to the preliminary, and I did voice my concerns, and I did feel like they were ignored. I felt like the, everybody's words were ignored. There's not a single person in this neighborhood that is for having an assisted living facility in our neighborhood, having the added traffic, having the extra vehicles for the emergency vehicles that be coming in, having the knowledge that people will be ending their lives just across the street from our houses, and have to live with that. That's not the area for a residential neighborhood, and to have to have the thoughts come into our mind, oh, somebody else just lost their life, or that's the place people go to die. We don't want the extra vehicles for the assisted transportation, food deliveries. We don't wanna have the lights on twenty-four hours a day because it is a medical facility. If they have an adult living facility, they will have to have lights on. They will have to have multiple people on staff twenty-four hours a day. There's gonna be extra waste. That means they'll probably have to get a dumpster. There's not ample parking in that neighborhood for it. Everything they showed up on the screen last two weeks ago showed that they had plenty of parking, but yet we were able to show they didn't based on their pictures that they laid out. They only had actually one parking spot and still be able to have that circle driveway accessible. They're gonna have medical waste. They're gon- the neighbors, they have children, spoke, said that they did not, one, have their children seeing that, and the council said, we think it would be good for the neighborhood. It'd be good for them to talk to the kids, going against what the neighborhoods are saying. I really feel that if you have any respect for this neighborhood in Spring Hill, you will abide by our wishes and let them seek a different location to have this type of a business put in. It is not for a residential neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So, that was all that we had sign up on the list, but if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, now would be your time. And once again, if you could just state your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name's Steve Corwin with MJSS Age One, sixty-seven thirty, Fonticello, Prairie Village, Kansas. Um, appreciate the opportunity to come in front of the council. Um, we are working on a development project at the northeast corner of two hundred twenty-third Street in Webster. Um, trying to bring, we've got two national restaurant chains we'd like to locate there. We've got two more additional commercial lots with that. Um, we'll be needing to come to the city to request, uh, financial incentives to make that happen. Um, we've, there's quite a bit of infrastructure needed down there, two hundred twenty-third is what it is. We would be looking at bringing, uh, water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer up from Victory, which would also open up all of that frontage on two hundred twenty-third north side of two hundred twenty-third for development. Um, right now, we're looking at, don't wanna take too much, get into the weeds too deeply, looking at about two point two million in infrastructure improvements there. What we'd like to propose would be a two-cent CID plus property tax abatement, which is the same thing Alatha did to keep two of their restaurants in their downtown area. Um, the revenue projected for the two restaurants we're dealing with right now, approximately a hundred eighty-five thousand a year for the CID and the property tax. The other two lots would be included, which would also throw those revenues at the, at the incentives. Pretty much it, I appreciate your time.
Awesome, sounds great. Thank you.
Anything, sir, can I get your name?
Oh, Steve Corwin, CEO.
Anyone else?
W I N. And then, what's your address?
If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation this, at this time, and move on to consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there are any questions or comments, now would be the time.
Great, thank you.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action at this time, and consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, an ordinance of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, authorizing conditional use permit CU dash twenty-four dash two, hospitals, nursing, or convalescent homes, congregate care facilities, and retirement housing, and address is four fourteen, South Jefferson Street, and Mr. Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening. So, the planning commission, uh, reviewed this at their, um, regular scheduled planning commission meeting, and the, there was a, uh, seven zero one recommended to approve the CUP. The, uh, fourteen-day protest period, uh, the, has, uh, gone by, and there was a, uh, valid petition filed. It has been checked by city staff and legal, and it is valid, and that, uh, the vote that you would be making tonight is in favor, it'll have to take five of you, or four-fifths of the, there's still five of the entire, yeah, so, one second, I need to-
Mr. Peel, you just can't. He is, he's here.
How are we gonna get his vote if we can't hear him?
So, yeah, I am, uh, I just jumped on the Teams meeting, he's on, and now he's smiling 'cause we're talking about him, uh, for what it's worth. Uh, so, he can hear us just fine. My two thoughts are, if Mr. Peel wants to participate in discussion, someone can dial him in and speakerphone, hold a speakerphone near a microphone.
You can do that.
That's one option we can do, or, uh, depending on how good of a typer he feels tonight, he's welcome to try to type stuff into a chat, and I can read it off on his behalf, or somebody else can. Um, or, we can have him not be part of conversations, he can just vote via chat, and we can read his vote into the record and submit the written chat afterwards. So, it's kinda up to you all what you're the most comfortable with.
We could just put his microphone up to the phone. I mean, that might work. Just, yeah, just turn his mic on, drop it down to the phone, that should work. Yeah, I'm good with that if you guys are. All right, carry.
Okay, thank you. One minute, please. Okay, so, the, uh, planning commission reviewed all the CUP, there was a site plan with this. The owners did get up and speak and represented. This is, uh, the facility will be inspected by the state. It, uh, they're talking about four to six residents, they're allowed to have ten or twelve. Yes, so, they will not, they'll be about half, uh, in, right in that area. They, they don't wanna pack it to the gills on this. Um, we've met with fire department several times, uh, I just had another meeting with Brad, uh, Rolston, the, uh, fire marshal, a couple days ago, to make sure that, you know, they were okay with it and all. Obviously, when the building permit comes in, there'll have to be some alarm systems and things like that put in place. There'll be a review to see if it needs to have fire suppression as well. Uh, there will be a building permit that has to be taken out for the reconstruction of some of the areas and all. All of it will be checked for handicap. They, uh, they will have a healthcare worker always there, twenty-four seven. This is a large property on a corner, uh, with a horseshoe driveway. It, uh, in, in talking to the planning commission, if any place in the city was large enough to meet this type of criteria and use, um, what, this house qualifies for it. Um, and like I said, since we did receive the petition, and it has been validated, it will take five of you, uh, which is three-fourths. The recommendation from the planning commission for approval of CUP twenty-four tw- dash two, uh, and site plan with the above conditions, you can approve, deny, table, remand back to PC, or planning commission for further study, and in the attachments, there's a legal review by the, um, Mr. Lau and everything's, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'll start it, um, so, I'm actually, so, most of you know I own a construction company and work on, on houses. I'm, and I actually have a unique opportunity right now, I'm working on a facility just like this, and it is a residential house in a residential neighborhood. Uh, it would be a neighborhood, not here in Spring Hill, but in a neighborhood within, within minutes from here, and the neighbors around it have no idea it is a facility like that at all, that you would never know it, there's not usually ever more than two cars there, usually, in fact, most of the times when I visit it, there's been one vehicle there. Um, they have, I think, anywhere from five to eight residents in there at a time. Um, like I say, the neighbors have no idea that it's not just somebody living there, there's not any extra traffic, there's not any, um, I've spoken to the neighbors, and, and they were actually surprised that it was a, that that's what it was, they had no idea. Um, so personally, I don't think that you would notice a difference in your neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not saying you guys are wrong for what you, what you guys feel or think or whatever, but I personally have witnessed, and it's been a big, a big project for us working on that, we've been in there for over a month. Um, but, so, I've had some experience- But, so I've had some experience with a facility exactly like this and it is a residential house. And none of the neighbors have any problem with it at all.
And I did went and toured two of them in Alatha. They are between well, where the courthouse, that street there and K seven in the older neighborhood area, larger homes. I toured both of them, received permission to do it. And I ran into the same thing. There was no bother to the neighborhood. When I was there, so.
So I have a question. And I know this is not a skilled nursing facility. Because I used to run those way back in earlier, but, so here's my question. What's the level of care of the resident? Because, and the reason why I ask that, that is partial, because at some point, depending on the care of the person, they may have to move into a skilled situation where they need twenty-four seven care.
That's correct.
They need licensed professionals instead of just a healthcare worker there. So, I mean,
Right, and the state's.
Things I kept hearing.
I'm sorry.
One of the things that I kept hearing was, you know, the gentleman saying people are gonna look upon, and I appreciate his opinion. I'm not discrediting that at all. But people are gonna look that upon as being a death house or something like that. And I just, I'm trying to figure out what the level of care is.
That was, that was the same question I had, because, you know, he brought that up and I, I know I have a family member that's in memory care right now. And we looked at facilities like this and a lot of them, yeah, they don't, they don't let them stay to a point where it's a, you know, two person type. It's, you know, where they need two person help. So I wondered, I don't know if the applicant wants to speak.
And I know the facility that, that I was working on, I don't believe that they've ever had a death in the facility. The one, the one that I visited and worked on, I don't think they've ever had one there. Obviously, I'm sure a resident has died, but not in that facility. Once they get to where they need more care, like you said, they move on to another facility that has a higher, higher grade of care.
So the state does not permit it to be a high skilled type facility where they have to have a lot of care. These facilities provide meals to make sure people eat and they have a balanced diet. They can help them to the doctor's office by transportation and all. Some of them still drive. The one I went to in Alatha, a man and wife lived there. They had no one else. They had no children. So they will receive help to make sure they get their medications on time. But in skilled care facility, it would not be. It is not permitted by the state. And that is why the state has allowed these to be placed in the residential zone, about any zoning, honestly. When the, the ones that I looked at and also spoke with staff, they're not even required. The only requirement is that they get with the fire department.
So the fire marshal routinely inspects these.
Yes, but what I meant is there's no CUP process, anything.
And the one I went in, the only way you could even tell it was anything different than a house was it, it had the fire lights throughout. Up the unit and stuff, the emergency fire lights. But other than that, you would have no, no idea it was, wasn't just a home.
So most communities do not even make it, go through a CUP process at all. It goes straight to the building permit, plan stage, and most of that's dealt with the state and the fire marshal. Of each community.
That's what I could tell too. Looked like we were the only ones to do that process.
It is.
Could we ask some more pointed questions to the applicant if they're here?
Yes, they're.
Just to, I want to address all the concerns.
You bet.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, there we go.
Do you have something, Brian?
No, I just was trying to get my microphone working.
Alright, cool. I don't know if you want to just go through and address the concerns they had or if you want us to ask.
So my name is Jasmine and I live in one three two seven nine Oland Park.
Can you state your last name, just so we.
Jasmine George, G E O R G E.
Thank you.
So one of the main concerns they brought is like the emergency services coming into the place very often. But, you know, just like he mentioned that it's going to be like it's, it's more like a place for people to have assistance with day-to-day activities. It's not going to be like, like a nursing home kind of facility, not like a long-term care facility. It is not a hospice facility. So this is like a, a place where people can come in and kind of know what's going on, able to do their day-to-day activities, but need some minimal assistance. So mostly people who can, who are functional, but still need some assistance. So there's not going to be like emergency services coming in every, so often. But of course, if anybody needs medical help, that we are going to call nine one one or assist them with any base that we can. So that is one of the concerns. And then, and then this, the facility is not going to be crowded. So, Kansas Department of Aging and Disability is, defines homeless, so this is going to be a homeless facility. Defines homeless as residents of eight to twelve residents. But the house that we have, we are planning to have like maximum of six residents. Because our main goal is to not have a crowded facility for any people who are going to live there. We don't want to, so me and, we both worked in nursing homes. So we both are nurse practitioners. We worked in nursing homes. So we wanted to see like what changes we can make to improve the patient's day-to-day life. Just to ha- give them like a, just provide a normal living place, even at their aging situations. So that's the reason that we wanted to bring a place like more like a house or home. And live in a residential area. And then also it's not like crowded. You can have like a lot of sunlight, have a healthy living, healthy food diet every day. And then do some activities together and have socialize with other people too.
Is there, so the two major concerns that I picked out from everything that was stated today was, one was the trash. Is there, is there an excessive trash in these type of facilities where you need a dumpster? Or can you, is it operate similar to a regular single-family home to where you can use just the normal dumpsters that we have?
We can use the normal dumpsters. We have, so these facilities, even though we have like, you know, maybe maximum six residents, you know, they will be still using the normal kitchen facility. So that's, you're not going to be using paper plate or disposable plates every day. And then the laundry will be done like inside the house. So I, I don't expect like excessive dump, like excessive trash or dumpster in this.
Okay.
I apologize. I should have addressed that. The site plan does not allow a dumpster location, just the regular rollout dumpster or two of them. You know, standard.
And normal. The other one was the lighting and that, I thought that was a really good point, because I know that, at least where my family member stays, there is they have lights on all the time inside the facility. So how would it, how would it work in a, in a house like this? Would it be normal where at night all the lights can be off? Or are you gonna have requirements to keep lights on all the time that could maybe disturb the neighbors?
We can, so the, the house that we have, so we have like a mid, central hall, hallway. And then there's like three bedrooms, like total on either sides. So that hallway is more like confined. It's not like, you can, you cannot see it from through the window or something. I would leave a light on in the hallway just for the safety of the people, just in case, just in case if somebody wants to get up or anything. Or we can also have like night lamps on, but it's not going to be bright lights at night.
What about exterior? Is there?
I'll address that. They are not allowed to have any exterior lighting in, in accordance to the site plan.
Okay.
Normal porch light and all, I mean,
Yeah, just normal.
You can drive around all night and see normal.
Yeah, sometimes you'll go and I'll see like floodlights.
That's correct.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
And that was not, it was addressed in the site plan is no additional floodlighting. What do you call it? Street lighting type, private street lighting or anything of that nature.
Those are the two that stuck out to me from, from the concerns that I would have concerns with personally, so. As far as parking go, I know that street's tough to park on, but I think when you're talking about parking, this probably has the best situation out of most houses in our city.
Yeah, because I mean, if another vehicle needs, if it's got the circle, you can just pull out and go around the circle and come back in.
Yeah, it's never perfect, but this is definitely better than most houses.
And I know as far as the trash goes, I'm, I'm a family of six. I've got four kids, my wife and I, and we can generate a crap ton of trash. So if it's good, if you're expecting about six people or, you know, seven, depending on, you know, if you have a worker there. I mean, I know how much trash we generate and, you know, you can, we can fit ours in the trash can every week. Sometimes it might be a little tight, but.
Yeah, I think my concern was the traffic on the road and the, the circle drive there kind of relates that, so.
I have a question. Are the residents that are gonna be staying there, are they considered alert oriented or, okay?
Yes, alert and oriented and able to need, able to do their daily activities, but may need some minimal assistance. Or like a reminder or something, just to make sure they take their medications, their eating and, you know, bathing and day-to-day activities.
And how many staff will be at the facility at all times? Do you have more during the day and then, I mean, what's that look like?
So, at, at, for now, like we are thinking about one staff and then maybe a nurse or somebody who can go visit them. But one staff to do the cooking and assist them with the daily activities in a day and one staff at night.
Have you run one of these before?
No, this is the first.
Okay.
And you said you have a background of nursing?
Yes, we did.
Alright, awesome. Very cool.
Pat, this is probably a question for you. I, I know this is a, is this kind of renewed annually?
We will, we will look at it. Staff will look at it.
So you'll do a review annually?
Yes, we have twenty CUPs out in that area. And that is, it comes up on our calendar and they, the guys go out and look at them annually. And they do a good job. I mean, they force like some trees to be replanted and things like that. So it's not just drive-by, you know, we'll check, make sure addressing the whole nine yards is correct. And then the fire department does annually and spot checking on these. And then if there are so-called excessive calls, then they will address that.
Well, no, like I say, once, once again, I want to make sure we take the neighbors', you know, concerns into account. And I feel like you've addressed most of those, at least verbally addressed each one of those. But I think this is kind of cool to have something like this in, in our community. I think it's something especially, you know, I have, I have a mother-in-law that's getting about to the point where she needs something like this. And I think it'd be awesome, she wants to live on her own, but she just needs more help than, than she can on her own. And I think it'd be cool if she had something like this where she could still live in a home, not in a facility. And still carry on her day-to-day stuff, but just get a little bit of assistance with some of the things she needs.
And that's how the state hopes to address this through their process as well. If you have any other questions, we'll be more happy to answer.
Yeah, I have one. So one of the complaints that the citizens had was they didn't get, they didn't feel like they had a voice. They didn't feel like.
It was a public hearing, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing was held on that.
And they were made aware and everything was.
Oh, sure. Yeah. We, there was a lot of people that spoke.
Yeah.
At the public hearing.
I just, somebody doesn't.
The notices were sent out.
Make sure.
Yes. I think they were more, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they were more saying that maybe the commission didn't comprehend or, or appreciate what they were saying. But there was discussion after the public hearing also.
You said there was about twenty CUPDs out.
CUPs.
CUPs. Do we have any other facilities?
No, we do not. No, we do not. So a perfect example of a CUP would be a, a storage that is in a C1. They can have that in there if they have a CUP. Another perfect example is our own Public Works Building is in their CUP.
The billboards and stuff are like that too, right?
Billboards, that's correct, yes.
No, I mean, I.
Some school buildings.
I think it, I grew up and I found out later in life that there was about five of these by me. I didn't, I never really knew. Again, they don't, I wouldn't look. They don't have to do anything there, so we never were notified or anything. But my wife's grandmother lived in one and, and it was really great. I wanted to do it for my aunt, who I take care of, and it just didn't work. She has memory issues and they don't lock down. So I'm assuming the doors, they can kind of come and go as they please, is take walks and.
It's not a lockdown facility.
Yeah.
I mean.
Which would be a bigger concern for me if it was, because then, yeah, if you have somebody with.
Exactly.
Something that, there could be some issues there, but outside of that, I mean, I feel like the issues that I heard that I was concerned about were addressed, I might not feel pretty good about it.
And there was a talk prior to this when the state facilitated all this several years ago. As, and the city started changing to get away from CUP. Community development felt like that we would keep it a CUP just for notification of the area. You know, it, it may come in handy that the person across the street and some elderly person falls down in the street, you know, and they can hopefully assume that they're from there and, you know. So, and it makes them aware.
I can definitely understand the concern. I mean, anything that, any change like.
Any change, yes.
Concerning and, I mean, for me, if, if I'm gonna have this, I would prefer to be an assisted living facility rather than some other type of living facility that has, you know, individuals living there outside of a family. So for me, I mean, I I feel good about it. I think it's, I think it's good. I know, I know we're probably not gonna make the neighbors happy, but I feel like it's probably the right thing.
And, and my hope is if this does go through, that, you know, a year from now, you know, the neighbors will be pleasantly surprised that it didn't affect them. You know, hopefully at all like they, like they expected and it was not what they were expecting and much better situation, so.
The staff and fire department will do everything we can to facilitate this so that it's not a large impact onto the area.
Well, especially if, if it, if it goes through, I would say I would like to have updates of kind of how it's going.
Sure.
And hear about it too.
You bet.
Especially being the first one.
So I, I have three questions. So one is, one of the concerns was waste, okay? And so I understand there's your typical waste, but when people think of medical facilities, they think of medical waste. So if you have, how would that be disposed of just to get?
Yeah, just take me by the microphone.
Sorry, Brian's on.
So we are not expecting much of a medical waste at this time. We are not going to have like people with high level of own care or dressing changes and things like that at this time. So all the linens will be washed inside the facility itself, like bedding and sheets and everything. So also we are, we are not expecting to have people with like infusions or any extensive medical care at this time. This is our first ones. He wanted to make sure everything is minimal. So we are not expecting medical waste at this time.
Or do the residents have to be continent? Because I'm thinking about briefs and a lot of waste with that.
So our goal is to have like high functioning residents with minimal resist, with minimal assistance. But if they are incontinent, yes, they, there may be some defense involved.
So zoning wise, is it zoned appropriately?
Yes, these, these are the, by statute, they can be placed in any area. Like I said, I think that this community is fortunate that we did not change it. That it still has to have a CUP, which is public hearing and then the discussion tonight as well.
Okay, and then my last question is, one of the citizens mentioned depreciation. I don't know if I can even ask that question, Spencer, but I mean, if you have something like this in a neighborhood, is it going to depreciate their homes? I mean, I don't know if I can even ask that.
No, you, you can ask that question. It comes up. You all have seen it frequently in any type of rezoning CUP question. Mr. Burton might know more than I do. I can tell you from the zoning work I've done, studies are minimal to nonexistent on. People say it's positive, people say it's negative. You can get a study to say kind of whatever you want in the year of our Lord twenty twenty-five. But studies are kind of ambiguous on whether there's an actual concrete value on that.
So I can say that the home probably sold for more than what it was going to. And then appraisers in the area just look at numbers. You know, and I say that with all respect, they, they paid a premium for it because it's a location that's hard to find for this type of, so if anything, it could have brought the value up right now. Because if you were to sell your house, they would look at the area sales. They don't know what that use is, you know, since it is. Use is, you know, since it is a residential area. So.
Appraisers don't typically look at uses of the property. They just look at the value and square footage and style. Yeah, I called a couple of realtors to ask about that.
And that's why.
And since this was, yeah, on these type of facilities, they don't see any issue.
That's why we appreciate as a, as a CUP still, because, you know, if, let's say there are bags of trash in there that were, and we'll spot check. And the state will be right there, spot checking as well, especially a new facility with.
I'd say especially.
Ownerships, yes, and ownerships that have not been involved in this, um, although they're probably the ones that'll do the best job. You know, won't be, um. Like a daisy on anything, you know, so. And this is the first.
Have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, there's no marketing or signage or anything that goes in the yard or on the facility, the building. Um, that designates that it is a business, like it, it looks, it looks like a regular residence as it sits today.
That is correct. The site plan and the CUP conditions do not allow that, uh, to have any type of signage.
Okay, so there's, 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 um, there's barricades in place for, for not allowing that.
That's correct, under the CUP and the guidelines.
Can you detail out a little more what the valid protest petition is? What the process is, wh- and what the benchmarks that need to be met make it valid?
Yes, we can.
In, in general, as, as staff gets ready, so participate, but the zoning process is set out by state statute twelve seven five seven. Uh, the protest petition has to be signed by one of two things, which is twenty percent of the. Property owners are twenty, within two hundred feet, and this is within city limits, so there's extra buffers if it's into the county, but we're not there. So within two hundred feet of this property, it's twenty percent of property owners or twenty percent of the property itself. Here, we were well over twenty percent of owners, um, and we were well over twenty percent of property itself. We didn't get into splitting hairs on, oh, this percentage of property, which. Could have been done, but because the twenty percent of property owners signed, that's kind of it under the statute. So that triggers a super majority for you all. Um, to vote to approve. It still requires a three-fourths vote. Um, and staff did, I think we had three of us each kind of go through the protest petition. We went through the map, compared notes, all came out. Right about the same, so.
Yeah, I concur. So, um, I looked at this, um, separately from Spencer and we came up with the. Uh, s- similar, uh, answer. So basically, we went out to the mapping and drew a, a buffer area. And based on that buffer area, we collected all of the addresses that fell within that buffer. Thank you.
He's on the phone.
Oh, that's right, yes. So there you go. That's it.
I can hear you, thank you.
We collected all the information on those homes that are within that buffer, how much, uh, square footage was with. Within the buffer and on the property, and we looked at that percentage and we were at about forty percent. So well over the twenty pers- well over the twenty percent we needed, so. Um, anyway, so between Spencer and I, I think we validated this separately and together we concur, so.
And validated, and validation of the names also.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Any other questions, Brian?
Um, no questions, just statement now, uh, I, I. My issue with this would be keeping close watch on parking and traffic. Um, trash comes up there as well. We've talked about it a little bit. Property maintenance perhaps, but I think the expectations are gonna be the same, no matter what the use was gonna be here. As far as property maintenance. Um, the other key point I think is this is not a rezoning, it's a conditional use permit. Which is exactly what it's, is named, so it were, it's a permit that has conditions. And if at some point those conditions are not being met, it will be addressed in the appropriate way. Um, we said that we're gonna review it probably annually at a minimum, perhaps even more than that, so. I do see the, the concerns of the neighbors, um, but I, I don't feel like we should turn this down. Um, if we do see in the future that it's not meeting those conditions, then I think it wouldn't be too hard of a process to pull the permit.
No, it's not hard at all.
Brian, was that it? I have another question if you're done.
No, that's it.
Um, on here, I noticed that it says if it's sold, there has to be. You know, notification to the city staff, but if it's sold to another. Operator, would we be able to go through this process again, or do they just automatically get to keep that?
No, we would go through the, the, uh, findings process again and. We would work with the state on that, uh, to make sure that operator is in compliance and other areas and things of that nature.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, an ordinance of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, authorizing conditional use permit, CU dash twenty-four dash two. Hospitals, nursing or convol- uh, convalescent homes, congregate care facilities and retirement housing, four fourteen South Jefferson Street, Johnson County, Kansas.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Feeback?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, uh, for CUP. CU dash twenty-four dash two has passed six zero zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on and move on to consider approval to apply for a stormwater management program or SMP grant for improvements to the City Lake Dam. And Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Okay, great, thank you. The next item before you is a request to approve a, an application for a grant. For the stormwater management program through Johnson County. The City Lake Dam was constructed in the nineteen fifties and the city is responsible for the maintenance of the dam and. The area surrounding the Veterans Park. In order for us to be compliant with the Kansas Department of Agriculture, we do have to do periodic inspections of the dam to make sure that it's in working order. Through our on-call services agreement, we engaged with Lamprey Nielsen to have them. Perform that inspection for us. Through that inspection process, they identified some improvements that needed to occur. Uh, you guys saw that presentation last time we were here. Uh, Chad Thompson from Lamprey, Rayne Ayrson did a wonderful job of presenting. Um, the inspection and the improvements necessary. Um, long story short, we need to. Uh, abide by some new regulations or the current, uh, standards to have additional free board. Uh, beyond what we have today. So in order to accomplish that, we would, uh. Construct a concrete barrier along the, uh, uh, along the dam so that we can be in compliance with that. Uh, so in nineteen ninety, uh, Johnson County, uh, they have a sales tax. That they collect each year to, um, have revenue for their stormwater management program. Uh, they do a lot of great services through this program to support a lot of the local municipalities as well as the county in general. One of the programs that they have is the stormwater management grant. Uh, this is, um. Something that they assist with local municipalities with their stormwater programs. Uh, their stormwater improvements and the cities identify, uh, the issues and then they apply for grant funding. So to assist with the City Lake Dam improvements, we would like to apply for the stormwater management program. Uh, we estimate that the project cost would be one point two million dollars. The grant would cover fifty percent. Of that project cost, leaving us with a local match of about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we do have a revenue source now with the newly created stormwater utility fund that. Uh, we get an estimated revenue of about eight hundred thousand dollars per year. We do have some services that we are. Um, trying to u- utilize some of that funding, but there should be plenty of funding left over for us to utilize on this project. Um, so you're probably wondering why, why I'm here today, but as, you know, staff starts to pursue some of these grant applications. Sometimes it requires a resolution of support or some sort of action by the council before applying for the permit. Oftentimes, it doesn't require any action until we actually receive the grant funding and enter into an agreement. Moving forward, staff's gonna be before you before we actually apply for these grants, so that we can get your sign off. Your head nod, your feedback on some of these grant applications before we actually go through the application process. So with that, staff recommends the approval of the, um, application to Johnson County for the stormwater management program. For the improvements to City Lake Dam.
I appreciate you guys bringing it to us right, right on the onset, because that keeps us all in the loop and helps us know before. Before we're actually doing it, what's, what's gonna happen. So I appreciate that a lot. And then, uh, I'm a huge proponent of finding grants, uh. That people are, you know, governments handing out money right and left, and so we might as well use it for our community. So, uh, yeah, I think this is great.
Yeah, I had serious reservations about this project, but the cost would be, uh, yeah, I do, this is gonna be ex- seven figures a lot, so I think. You know, well done finding the Johnson County grant. I think that needs to be pursued for sure, and then having the stormwater. Um, tax, if you will, is a creative way to solve that problem, so.
I mean, I think it's necessary. Uh, go ahead, Brian.
I like this a lot. I don't have anything problem with this project. My issue is with that funding money, I would rather prioritize South Street. Um, uh, for the sidewalk and ditch issue. Um, the, the lake and dam problem has existed for a while, as for the best of my knowledge. And the other project would have a much better direct impact, particularly for public safety. Um, so I don't have anything wrong with this project. I just would rather prioritize that money to something different. Before we did this one.
Well, for the South Street project in particular, we are in the process of doing our Safe Streets For All comprehensive safety study. That street would likely, um, be part of that program, that framework for us to apply for future. Grants outside of the stormwater grant, outside the stormwater utility associated with. That stormwater utility funds, there are guidelines on what we can and can't use that funding for. Yes, we can use it to install stormwater inlets and pipes and. Uh, associated drainage structures for us to create that. That wider section so that we could put the sidewalk in, but the sidewalk itself will have to come from a different funding source. The sidewalk, the, the stormwater utility would not be in a.
The ditch part is like eighty percent of that cost.
I was gonna say, I thought the.
Goes into.
Stormwater part.
Stormwater piece can fund.
Yeah. I think Brian's on to something, but in twenty-five should be our first year of collecting this stormwater fund and. I think if this project's gonna bleed into twenty-six, you know, we, we can cross that bridge when we get to it, but I think. Trying to max out what we can get in grants is a good idea and then figuring out where exactly that money comes from. I don't know if we. Say it automatically comes from stormwater or if we say, you know, we look somewhere else, but. I definitely think the project, you know, we need to do, but I like, I like where you're, uh.
Well, and I'll find another funding source for it.
I'm not gonna vote against it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, uh, like I said, the project is great. I just don't want South Street to get pushed back.
Mm-hmm. Well, and South Street's something that's needed done for years and years, especially, you know, if you drive by there in the morning when kids are going to school. You know, in, in the springtime or late fall when, when they are walking, uh, you see a lot of kids walking down that street and. You see a lot of cars kind of going around them and, you know, if somebody's not paying attention, God forbid, somebody's not paying attention. So, yeah.
Well, in the last couple of weeks, showed it even more.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, no, I, I, I think, I think Brian's right. I think we. Move forward with this, but, um, maybe we talk about where that, the funding part from our side comes, but. I think the project's necessary. I think, uh, but I think Brian's on the right track of saying, hey, it's stormwater. I think we really need to. Probably focus on the street, but like I said, we got a whole year, I feel like, to kind of address that, so. Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with this.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the application of a stormwater management program grant for the improvements to the City Lake Dam.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to consider approval to apply for a highway safety program, uh, improvement program or HSIP for intersection improvements. As outlined by staff and Mrs. Abel, you still have the floor.
Okay, the next item before you is a request to approve an application with KDOT for the HSIP. Or the highway, uh, safety improvement project. Through the US DOT, there are, um. Specific funding programs that are available and KDOT adminis- administers those. Um, HSIP is one of them, and then they've got another one that is, um, specific to rural roadways. So we looked at both of those, um, the, um, HSIP grant is. Their primary focus is increasing the safety at intersections. So, um. In late twenty twenty-four, the city engaged, um, HDR as the consultant to work on the SS four A project. Through the SS four A, there's a lot of data, data that is collected, um, with that project on. Some of the different accidents around the city. So they've collected all the information from. Uh, a certain time period to, um. Determine the type of accidents, whether it's a minor accident or a fatality accident or something in between. And each of those accidents have a dollar amount that's associated with them. It's basically the cost of the life that could have been, that, that was taken. And so the safety study looks at preventative measures that could have been, that could be taken. To prevent some of those accidents in the future. So there's a lot of calculations, a lot of traffic data that is collected. And so, um, working with HDR, they created this hazard map. That, um, we will be rolling out with the SS four A Advisory Committee and eventually. Once that's finalized, we'll roll that out to the community as well. So it's just a hazard inventory map that's. Almost like a heat map of all of the different accidents and in the region. We looked at one mile outside the, the city limits for that. So based on that data, we tried to identify key intersections that could. Benefit from an improvement that would have a benefit to cost ratio above a one point oh. So, uh, looking at the cost of the lives that could be prevented by. A potential improvement at an intersection, that would be the benefit, and then the overall cost would be. How much does that infrastructure cost? And if that benefit to cost ratio is over a one point oh. Then it is eligible for this grant. So I. Will let the traffic engineers digest some of the, the data, but that's about the extent that I understand from that traffic engineering, because I'm not a traffic engineer.
Do you know what a life is worth?
Exactly, that's what a life is worth. Um, so we identified several intersections. A lot of the heat map, a lot of the, the serious injury accidents were along one sixty-nine. Um, so we started looking at some of those intersections and coming up with some of these wild ideas of. What if we did this type of intersection, or what if we did this improvement and everything like that? So we came up with a list of those intersections. Based on follow-up, um, conversations that we had with some of the KDOT safety staff. They encouraged us to focus our efforts away from one sixty-nine. Because of the K seven, highway one sixty-nine corridor study that is currently underway. So, um, they wanted us to, yes, concentrate on some of those areas, but. Maybe at another time, whenever they've completed their corridor study to figure out what the overall improvements for that corridor needs to be. So we're not. Doing some of the stuff prematurely.
The problem with that, the only problem I have with that is that they did a corridor study, what, twenty years ago and nothing came of it?
Yeah.
So I understand them saying that, but that's all fine and dandy, but if they just sit and do nothing, then it doesn't do us any good.
Yeah, well, and we also need to, um, we've got the hundred and ninety-first street traffic signal, we've got the hundred and eighty-third. Potentially ha- uh, traffic signal. We've got some other improvements that we do have planned on one sixty-nine, so let's get those underway. And then, yeah, this is an annual program, comes up every year, so we're gonna continue to have needs, so we'll continue to apply. And then, yeah, this is an annual program, comes up every year, so we're gonna continue to have needs, so we'll continue to apply. Uh, so we did look at that area, we also looked at the area around uh, two hundred and twenty-third street. To see there's a couple of intersections, Victory, Webster, some of those intersections that could be, benefit from having. A um, some improvements done. But we also know, as the gentleman spoke earlier, that there's potential for some development in that area. And so maybe we should wait and see what's gonna happen with some of that development. And then decide what kind of improvements we need to do as far as any realignments or anything like that, so again. We don't wanna prematurely make some of these improvements just to have them ripped up in the future with. Future development and future infrastructure needs. So we landed on a hundred and ninety-first and Ridgeview. So this is an area that's around a middle school, there's a high school nearby. Ridgeview is on the C I P and uh, future funded list for the cars program. So um, we've had conversations with Johnson County Public Works staff, they've received a lot of complaints. Especially recently with the culvert repairs and the detour around a hundred and ninety-ninth street that we had last year. Um, so some improvements need to be done, it's currently a two-way stop. You know, maybe a four-way stop, maybe um, turn lanes, well. And there's a lot of development that's going on that will continue to go on in that area. There's a lot of school traffic, it's only gonna increase with the development, so we're recommending a roundabout at that intersection. And based on just conversations with the traffic engineers. Um, they're in agreement with that, that traffic would be flow more efficiently through that intersection. Especially during the peak hours of school drop-off and pickup and everything when traffic is, is at its worst.
Yeah, and I think most of us can remember when um, Ridgeview and a hundred and ninety-ninth was before the roundabout there. And it's significantly improved that intersection, I mean, by a mile, I mean, you used, you used to sit sometimes at that intersection for ten minutes trying to, yeah, so, yeah.
So how does that intersection work since what, three quarters of its county?
Yes, three corners, wa- three quarters, corners would be in the county, so um, I have reached out to the Johnson County Public Works. They are gonna provide us with a letter of support for this grant that should get us a little bit further. I've also contacted the school district to get a letter of support from them because we have a middle school and high school nearby. This grant would be, would fund ninety percent of, of the, the costs associated with it. So we would be responsible for the ten percent local match. We could go to the county, since you're right, three quarters is in the county. There's a potential that that area could be annexed in, in Spring Hill in the future as well. So um, a lot of things could happen in the next year and I. I will go to the county and ask them for money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just didn't know if you had to get their permission, I mean, I think that's what, that was my bigger concern, I, I. I suppose they give us money, I don't know.
I spoke with the public director, um, Brian Pedig.
Pedig.
About a month ago, he said he'd been, been in close contact with you guys about this very thing, so good job on the follow-up, this is exactly what we were hoping for.
So with that, staff recommends approval of the grant application for the um. Highway Safety Improvement Project for a hundred and ninety-first and Ridgeview. I'm available if you have any questions.
Do we have a funding source for the, uh, just say gasoline taxes, that was says, funding source for the ten percent match?
Yeah, the consultant. Do you have a estimated total cost of that project? A rough estimate, very rough. Cause ten percent of a very rough estimate would give us a rough, rough.
I'm not sure, it, couple of million.
I was gonna say, what did a hundred and ninety-ninth cost, like, one and a half, two?
Right, right, right.
Probably twenty-five, thirty percent of that now.
Over one.
Two-five, so we're looking two fifty to.
Maybe two fifty.
Five hundred thousand, maybe, that's not bad.
No, it's, but not for what you get out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and it would be a smaller roundabout, this would be a, a single lane roundabout.
Oh, would it be smaller, you think?
Which honestly, I think is better, cause I think people get confused into lane roundabouts.
They do, especially in that one.
Yeah. There's a lot of. Trucks and stuff that come through there, though, a single lane roundabout would be okay.
Well, yeah, the roundabout has a truck apron in the middle of it and that's specially designed for truck wheels to go over.
Okay.
The curb and the apron and everything and we can take a look at the design depending on, you know, cause we're gonna have to get a fire truck through there, we're gonna have.
Yeah, oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, so those are, those are specially designed so that trucks can go through.
Yeah, there's just so much construction going on there that they're gonna, whether we stop through traffic or not, doesn't matter, there's gonna be direct traffic that comes through there, so.
And you see this up uh, by, was it, what's uh, the north elementary school, uh, forest? Like, I think where there's the tunnel.
Prairie Creek?
Prairie Creek.
Prairie Creek.
What a light that's done there with the roundabouts right there by the school.
Is that a single roundabout?
It is, I believe.
Oh, it is, okay.
Cause there's no southbound there, it's just uh. There's no, there's just a field to the south of it, so it's just swings around.
North of a hundred and seventy-fifth is also done.
Yeah.
Multiple roundabouts.
Oh, that little, oh yeah, that one over there, that's.
Yeah, at a hundred and seventy-fifth.
Trying to picture it, but I'm just thinking about the big one.
If you go up to, if you follow, take Ridgeview all the way up to Lathen, get north of a hundred and fifty-first street, there's like three or four of them in a row that they just put in.
Oh, yeah, they just put all those on Ridgeview, by Garmin, yeah.
Yeah, right, uh, Oletha and Overland Park love the roundabouts, but they have, um, I believe there's two in front of. Blue Valley and in front of um, a hundred and fifty-ninth and just.
Over by Blue Valley High School, yeah.
Blue Valley High School, yeah.
Yeah, they're everywhere, yeah. I think they're effective, slows traffic down, it's safe.
I think that would be a, a big help to that corner, that's where my kids go to, or all of my kids go to school over there, so it's.
Same.
It's kind of a nightmare right now.
It is, and we've, we've heard a lot from, you know, between us and then especially the county. I don't know if Brian shared that with you or not, but you know, they got a lot of complaints, especially recently.
No, it, it's a dangerous intersection with, and there's, I mean, in the morning, the north or the southbound flow to the high school is, uh. It's, it's significant and trying to turn into Wolf Creek.
It'll probably actually alleviate some of a hundred and ninety-ninth's issues right now, if we had another good route to get to the school.
This is, this is excellent news.
Yeah, last year, I think they fixed something in one of the culverts right there and then I think literally the week after they fixed it, I think somebody wrecked it. And hit it again and broke it. And then I drove by there, oh, probably, oh, just a couple of months ago and there was a car on that corner in the ditch, I'm, I'm.
That's the county side, not our side, right?
Yeah, I think it was the county side, but I guess, I think it was a, looked like they were probably coming from the high school, so, I'm guessing they probably went off that corner right there. Um, so yeah, that'll be great improvement if we can get that to go through.
I mean, anytime we can get ninety percent covered, it's a good project.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter what it is, so, cool, now this is a great idea, let's hope we can get it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve application, move to approve application for a highway safety improvement program, H S I P grant. For intersection improvements as outlined.
Got a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a master services agreement with Land Company Real Estate Services, Inc. Mrs. Able East of the floor, you're pretty busy tonight.
I am very busy. Um, so the next item before you is a request to approve a master services agreement with the land company. Uh, so we've, I'm, I'm actually going to present the next three items together and then if you guys could. Uh, approve them individually, uh, as individual actions, that would be great, cause I'm trying to speed through this for you guys today, tonight. Uh, for years, the land company has um, provided services to the city of Spring Hill. Uh, for real estate, uh, real estate valuation and land acquisition services. Um, rightaways, easements, those are all needed as, as we do some of these improvement projects. Whether it's a temporary construction easement, drainage easement or rightaway, we still have to go through the same process. Especially whenever we have to go through a federally funded process, uh, project, then that process is even more difficult. Um, so the land company has um, previously operated under a, a two-year agreement. Which just expired at the end of December of twenty twenty-four, so. We wanted to go ahead and get moving with some of the projects that we currently have underway. Uh, we wanted to lock them into a um, master services agreement. Similar to what we did for the on-call engineering and architectural services agreement. Um, same agreement, same protocol, we would have a task order. We would lock in the services, or we would lock in their hourly rates and they would have the opportunity to update those hourly rates annually. So again, very similar, we would use that same protocol. So as needs arise, we would um, enter into individual task orders and those task orders would follow our. Uh, purchasing policy and our uh, approval authority. So um, the first project in front of you is the northeast sewer project. Um, there are, with some anticipated growth and needs that we have. Um, in the northeast area of the city, we've engaged Lamprey Nielsen to help us with some of the improvements. Um, in the northeast area of the city and those sewer improvements require drain, uh, require sewer easements. Uh, in order for us to move forward with that project. There are eight uh, tracks of land that will require easements and um, we received a. An estimate from the land company that the total cost of. That land uh, valuation and land acquisition services, that would cost about ten thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The second task order would be for a hundred and ninety-ninth street from Ridgeview to Renner. That project is currently being designed by B H C Roads or uh, Run Guard Hahnemichael. They um, are finalizing those plans, uh, finalizing the final plans. There are eighteen tracks that will require easements and rightaway along that corridor. To accommodate the new storm sewer roadway and other infrastructure that we need for that project. And the total cost of that task order is twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. So the um, items before you is number one, approve the master services agreement with the land company. Number two, approve the task order for the northeast sewer in the amount of twenty, uh, uh, ten thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. And number three would be to approve a task order for a hundred and ninety-ninth street in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. With that, I am available if you have any questions.
And you guys can just go ahead and do questions on all three of them and then we'll just vote individually.
I had to step out for a minute, so I missed a little bit. I know we've done this in the past, is there a reason why we need to use a land company rather than doing internally or how does, what's the main reason for that?
So this takes specialized services, uh, so the land company provides uh, real estate valuation. Uh, appraisal services uh, for each of the properties, they negotiate with the property owners uh, on site. Uh, to uh, show them what the easement um, easement needs are. And then they negotiate with those uh, fees would be. So they determine what the real estate value is for that need for that easement or rightaway. And then they do the negotiations for us, so it's a specialized service that requires a certification that we don't have internally.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, my thoughts are, you know, if we're gonna be doing this project at some point in the future, then we need to be taking the steps that we've taken in other projects to. To prepare for them, so.
And these costs cover. The actual acquisition of the properties that we need, it, it's not just fees going to the company.
No, this would be the fees going to the company, for each of the tracks, the land company will receive. Uh, it's in your master services agreement, uh, seven or eight hundred dollars per track for them to. Uh, figure out what the, the comparable pricing is for the real estate value of that property. And what the um, amount for each of the easements would be. It would be the face-to-face meetings to go out and negotiate with the property owner, any follow-through that they would need to do. Um, to get those easements signed and that paperwork uh, ready to be recorded. So it's a lot of legwork and actually seven to eight, seven to eight hundred dollars is not a whole lot per tract. Especially whenever we have temporary construction easements, rightaway and a drainage easement for, you know, we may have. Three different um, pieces of paper that they're gonna have to work with each of these tracks on.
Yeah, the compensation is six ninety-five per track and negotiation acquisition is five ninety-five per track.
And how many tracks are there? Eight?
So on the northeast sewer.
Eight in one and eighteen in the other.
Yeah, so there's eight on the sewer project and eighteen on the roadway project.
That was my main thing, I was, I was trying to establish if we're gonna have more costs coming on this.
We shouldn't because the design is locked in, so we know what our easement needs and our rightaway needs are, so we already know. How many uh, properties we're gonna be negotiating with.
So it's six ninety-five for one piece, five ninety-five for the second piece?
Correct.
So about twelve hundred total for each? On top of the thirty-three or whatever for the two combined.
About thirteen hundred.
It's, it'll be thirteen hundred.
It'll be thirteen hundred for each of the eighteen properties or thirteen hundred for each of the eight properties.
Chad, what do you got?
I think what you're. Okay, thank you. There, there's two parts to it, acquisition is after this. So this is for all the negotiation and working through it and then your acquisition cost is after that. I think that's what you're asking, Mr. Pill, isn't it? There will be additional costs for each piece of property to acquire it.
And that'll be significantly more than five ninety-five.
Yes, will be significantly more.
I, I didn't want Mr. Young to think.
But the fee, but the fee portion is about six ninety-five plus five ninety-five for each parcel.
This is what we're paying them to do the work.
Yeah. Alright.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion on number fourteen.
Start at fourteen. Uh, move to approve the master services agreement with Land Company Real Estate Services, Inc. For a three-year term for real estate valuation and land acquisition services and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the agreement.
A second?
Got a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero, next I entertain a motion on number fifteen.
Uh, move to approve a task order with Land, Land Company Real Estate Services, Inc. For the real estate valuation and land acquisition services associated with the northeast Interceptor Sewer Project and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the agreement.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to sixteen and I entertain a motion on that one.
Move to approve a task order with Land Company Real Estate Services, Inc. For the real estate valuation and land acquisition services associated with the one hundred and ninety-ninth street. Retriever Renter Improvements Project and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the agreement.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is number seventeen, consider approval of Water One merger agreement and Mr. Lau, you have the floor.
Alright, so I'm gonna start general with the concept of the Water One, they call it a merger, it's really more of a. Buyout of our system and then move into what we're actually gonna talk about tonight and request, so. Uh, backing up Water One has discussed with the city taking over portions of, or taking over the city's water utility. Um, so everyone who's served by Spring Hill Water would become a Water One customer. Uh, Water One's got a pretty spectacular reputation nationwide, they've won a bunch of awards and competitions for best tasting water. Um, so part of that has just been working to kind of merge this, merge the two systems, figure out the contract. I've been working with one of their attorneys for a while on this back and forth. We had ambitiously hoped that the contract might be ready for you guys to look at tonight. Uh, few ticks away from that and we're ironing up some last details, so tonight we're not gonna ask you to approve actually. Merging the systems or, or, you know, going through that process, but one of the hiccups with the process has been. Um, as if Water One were to take over our system, they would take over our water tower. They have their own water tower, um, and my understanding and Mr. Spear's gonna correct me, cause I'm probably gonna put my foot. And maybe both into my mouth here, but they need what's called an altitude valve in our water tower to take it over because they're at different heights. And so they've gotta make sure one doesn't flood the other, and I think I just butchered it. Yeah, okay, uh, we'll, we'll correct it later, uh, and I won't get my feelings hurt, so the problem is to do that, uh. the problem is to do that, uh kinda needs to work around Cardinal Glass because they are on and functioning all the time. Uh so they had a scheduled plant partial or total shutdown, total shutdown in February, which is exceedingly rare for them, which gives a great time to get in while they don't need the access to that amount of water and do that work. Um so there was a window where the condition precedent of getting Water One to take over the system is to do that altitude valve work. The city would pay for that and Water One would do the actual installation. So Water One has a one of their binding rules is they're not allowed to use their current subscriber basis money to go buy new systems. Um so if you're a current customer, they can't use your money to go buy more customers and keep growing and growing. Which kind of makes this, this is why we're delayed on a contract. It makes the whole thing difficult because they can't just assume a bunch of costs. We're kind of working out who's paying for what and how it's gonna work. One thing is because that altitude valve needs to happen more or less next month, uh we're kind of in a make a decision now. We've gotta be ready to do that or the opportunity might pass and this deal just kind of falls apart. So staff wanted to bring this to you tonight. Um we've kind of all been working on it, so questions might get tossed around a little bit. I'll probably go back to my seat and we can just kind of attack this as a group, but one thing we'd like the council to consider approval of is the contract for that altitude valve. The quote that Water One gave us was seventy seven thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and forty seven cents. Uh so taking a page from Ms. Dunn's book, I was gonna ask for approval up to seventy eight thousand dollars. Uh assuming this contract keeps moving forward, staff thinks we're in a good spot, you will have final approval on that contract, but if things need to get moving very quickly in February to get that valve going, we'd like to be able to have the mayor enter into that contract and commit that amount of money to get things going. If for some reason this doesn't work out, we wouldn't spend that money and enter into that contract, but this gives us the flexibility. They've got a board meeting, I think, next week. Or first week of February before our next meeting, so we had to kind of get to this before they did. Mr. Spear can talk more of the technicalities of why this altitude valve is going in. Candidly, this is not something the city would go put in on our own to help our system. So that's part of the tricky part is they're asking us to commit this money for something we don't necessarily need. But if we don't do it, the deal's off completely. So it's an odd spot. No one really likes being in this spot, but this is a contingency plan of you guys potentially approving that expenditure if we need to do it. Um and we would be communicating with you all the whole way as it happens and updating you in the next meeting. So any questions for me? I can take them otherwise for staff to say the correct things technically. Ask them.
I think this is a good, I think this is a good thing. I know we've talked about this for probably a year or more. I think it's something that, you know, we never like to give away our utilities or anything like that, but this is something that'll benefit. I think the entire community will have better tasting water. Um most likely, hopefully the rates will go down. Um and so overall, I think it'll be better in the in the long term.
Yeah, I should add really quick that the driving force of this is the good of the citizens. So Water One is almost certainly able to provide the water cheaper now. Um and long-term, cheaper long-term. So the goal of the city here is, you know, put uh citizens in the best possible spot. So it might take some upfront costs by the city uh to get it there, but then citizens would benefit, sorry. That was the business justification for it. I kind of glossed over the.
No, and I and I'd also like to say part of this is that Cardinal Glass shuts down about once every fifteen or twenty years for a complete rebuild. Um so the window is shrinking for us and that's that's the urgency in this is that w- we can't take them offline in the future. So you've, we've got about a sixty-day window uh to complete this and even though we were gonna take it off the agenda this evening because the contract wasn't ready, after meeting with Water One this week and all the staff, it it's it's become very apparent that we need to uh discuss this and hopefully get it approved this evening so that if we do move forward with that uh contract that that we don't hold up Cardinal Glass on their renovations.
And for anybody that doesn't know, Cardinal Glass makes the majority of the glass for the entire center of the United States. So from from far north all the way down to Texas and stuff, so they do make a large portion of the glass here in the country. So and if you ever get a tour of the facility, Lane and I got to tour it a couple of years ago. It's pretty cool to see see how the whole process works, but I I can see how they wouldn't be able to go offline because it's it's a constant.
It'd be a really good time of the year to tour it right now.
So when are they scheduled to shut down?
Sometime soon in the next like two weeks.
Yeah, but we don't have, I can't tell you the exact date right now, but it's uh early February is when when it will start. Uh the shutdown will begin and they're estimating, you know, six weeks or so they is their hope.
Oh, is how long they'll be shut down for?
Yeah.
And how long does this uh take to install or change?
You said, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the the altitude valve, altitude valve itself is a day, maybe two and and what Water One is proposing, there's a lot of the work can be done in advance. The tower does not have to be offline to get the the piping and and infrastructure in. It's but there is a point where the where the tower will have to be taken offline. So they're gonna they're gonna minimize that window as much as possible. Which would require it to, you know, might take a a couple of days just to phase it, but it it's a pretty, pretty short, you know, easy process.
So if we approve a dollar amount tonight, it's not gonna happen before we meet again. It's just gonna be available for their meeting.
So the the tricky thing is is the project is quick, but the lead time on this part is pretty long. So they need to know if they need to order it by their next meeting, roughly in the next couple of weeks because it's a very special part.
Okay.
So there's not a warehouse full of them that we can just go pick one out.
Okay.
So does this shut off the water for the center part of Spring Hill? Like whenever they go to install it, does that mean?
Does that mean the day of no water?
No, no, the so our water system is not that tower supplements our water system. Our system isn't is not dependent upon it. Uh in in fact, you know, at at any given time, in any given day, you know, there may be no water flowing uh from that tower and we yeah, we still have, still have a good water supply. So having it offline folks living closest to it might see a five or ten PSI reduction in pressure, but it won't affect our ability to provide water.
It's mostly a reserve tank.
Yep.
Good.
And safety precaution for the glass plant.
Yeah. I guess my major concern was that, you know, this whole time we've been talking about it, I thought Water Two was on board with us leaving and it sounds like they're not necessarily, they're still fighting for our business, so I'd kind of like to pursue that a little bit more and figure out what what it is that happened there. So so I was under the assumption that they were not really either wanting us or not really in the in the game, which we got notified a couple of days ago that they would still like to work with us, so.
Sure, so for what it's worth, and this kind of dovetails with the shutting down the the tank and water. The city purchases water from Water Two, so that's where the water's coming from on a on a day-to-day basis. Uh that contract, the original term expired a few years ago. We have negotiated a couple of one-year extensions. The next one runs this summer, um which is sort of I don't know if that's why Water One approached or that sort of, but the timing worked out of, well, maybe let's address a, you know, competitive pricing situations or somebody else that could do this the same or better. From a legal side, I haven't heard Water Two. They've proposed some numbers in this week. Um so negotiations to be done there. We will explore that. I think all of our staff, me included, are capable of running both at the same time, so we can look into that and work with Water Two. You know, as as we said, the goal of the Water One deal was to provide the best price and service and water to the city. So if that can be done from someone other than Water One, I don't know if there's a problem with that, but.
Yeah, and it and it was gonna be significantly different, like it was gonna really benefit the citizens.
So yeah, Water One would be cheaper than what we're currently paying Water Two. Um and the rates of Water Two, the problem with short-term rates are gonna be higher than a twenty, thirty-year deal.
Yeah.
Um and that's such twenty, thirty-year deal with them is a much different question than a, you know, a year-to-year renewal that we've been on. So there's a lot of moving parts into it, but um the Water One structure was pretty favorable for for ratepayers.
The and and there's a lot of variables to think about on this, including um if Water One takes over the system, then they they take over the maintenance of the facility or the facilities, including the uh water mains, whereas if we stay with uh Real Water Two, then we would have to still maintain the system and any major expenditures. You know, if we had to add another uh water tower, we have a major water main break, that would be on us and not on on Water One. But yes, we can definitely look into that. Um I think there's some limitations on.
Their capabilities.
Yeah, the water rights and availabilities of that. I I think some of other uh Real Water District Two's customers may have uh had to contract with Water One in order to get additional gallons per year or day that they need. So I think there's some limitations, but we can definitely look into both.
Well, I know the pricing's, you know, better now probably, but do we have any future control with Water One to far as far as like controlling pricing as it goes?
Probably not. Um what I would say is if we looked at historical, I think that's probably the best indication of what we can expect in the future. The numbers that we originally looked at with the merger included, there were still cost savings to the citizens. And then at the end of that ten-year, was it a ten-year period of time? At a at the end of the ten-year period of time, the uh there's an additional drop in those costs. So it'd be even a greater savings to the to the citizens.
Do we have figures on that to?
We we do.
We do. Um with the residents uh paying the assistant development fee for joining Water One. For the first ten years, they'll save about seventy dollars a year. So when you think about an average water bill's about forty-five dollars. Um they save uh basically a little over a month each year on their water bill. When the assistant development charge after ten years expires, they'll be saving about two hundred and thirty dollars a year um on their waters bill. So that's several months of free. Uh and that, of course, is looking at current rates, how the rates change in the future. And that's comparing Water One's rate and base charge to our, the Spring Hill water and base charge, so.
What's the, um I know for a while there we were having issues with with water loss. I mean, I feel like we've addressed a lot of that in the last couple of years. What, is there a a little bit of profitability, I'm assuming, from water right now to help cover big expenditures and stuff? Do we know what that is?
The system, the art, the water utility for Spring Hill turns a small profit, the budget. When we do the budget, it is positive. Um there is cash in the fund. We've talked about that cash.
Yeah.
And so it is most certainly self-supporting. It's in no way a drain and for the people who are listening, um it is not supported by tax dollars. It's all supported by the users of the system, so it is self-supporting. It's just, if you think about, it's limited for, you know, it's locked all the way around um with other sellers. And so we're limited in growth. And then you think about a hundred-year-old water system underground will require a lot of maintenance in the future and uh Water One or another provider may be more
Capable.
Able to um maintain and improve the system over time compared to our small system.
And how many, how many employees do we have um associated with water or paid from water right now?
We have two full-time water employees. Um I have one full-time accounting clerk that works utility billing. And then we have a one employee in Glendis area that processes payment and does customer service as well. Um part of the Public Works Director Jacob's pay um is also paid from the water fund. When we develop the budget for twenty-five, we planned to operate the system about six months and then move those pieces out. We don't see at at this time any employees not having a position with the city. Um we could use a a maintenance person here or a a wastewater employee and things like that. So you also have to think about, in my department, we will send out just as many bills. They just won't have water on them. You know, so the workload in my department won't change. The workload in Glendis won't change. We'll receive as many payments as we have. Um we just won't have a system to maintain and we'll find something else for those employees to do. And we budgeted that way.
Pays for them. So that's part of the issue too that I have.
Yeah, and we also looked at costs that would be completely eliminated. We obviously won't be buying water from somebody. We won't be maintaining lines and um meters and things like that. And then we looked at the costs that would be shared, so because he's been speaking, our legal bill will not change. Well, we're not done negotiating on that yet. We don't have a water system.
Hopefully, hopefully it'll change a little.
Yes, and so we would split that bill a different way between other operating. And we did budget, I keep saying this, in twenty-five, after six months, to take those costs into other parts of the city where they where it makes sense.
Yeah. No, I remember doing that. I just, um again, I was under the assumption, like I said, that I thought we were kind of getting pushed out of Water Two and that's why we were going this route. So for me, it was kind of a, whoa, okay, well, let's reassess that since they kind of wanna be involved with us still, you know, what is the best deal? See, I mean, I I don't know if I'd wanna hold up and say we don't at least approve to be able to get things ordered and and do all that, but I definitely think we need to probably take a little bit of a step back and make sure we have a conversation with them and and bring it to us so we can know exactly what they have to offer and make an educated decision rather than just jump into it. You know, that's my opinion on at least.
Any other questions or comments?
The comment I would make on on yours is we've been working on this for months. And there's highs and lows and, you know, bumps in the road and things like that. But we haven't had a lot of opportunity. This is really the first time we've talked about it publicly. And so the things you're looking for and all the discussion in the background and the highs and the lows will certainly be discussed with you before you that you actually make that decision. I think the getting the valve in place to take some stress off of Cardinal Glass and what we're doing and while they're down is is kind of a different decision to that, so that that community partner has what they need to to go.
Yeah, I wanna be a good partner with Cardinal Glass. I think also just to continue the conversation of a competitive environment.
Yeah.
Future decisions.
Any other questions, comments?
What is it you need from us tonight?
So this would be a a vote to authorize the mayor to enter into a, they call it a MAMO contract. You can just call it a contract with Water One for up to seventy-eight thousand dollars for an altitude valve in the water tower.
Let's write this out. Yeah, can I just say?
What he said?
Anybody else wanna try to tackle that?
I can say it again.
Say it again.
Yeah, it's to be a a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Water One. Uh for an amount not to exceed.
For not to exceed.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Water One for the amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
For the water valve for the tower.
Say for installation of an altitude valve.
For installation of an altitude valve.
Great.
I second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. That ends formal council action. At this time, we'll move on to announcements and reports. I don't think I have anything. Mr. Young?
I don't really have anything. I wanted to address um Steve Corwin that came in. I've been talking to him for about a year about that development he wants to do there on two hundred and twenty-third. I wanted to kind of see what you guys' opinion was on that. I know very important to me. I wanna try to get restaurants and things like that in. I know there's definitely some cost to us for it or ways that we'll have to probably help support that, but I kind of wanted to get your guys' feel on what you thought about it.
Yeah, I know it's something that's been in the works for a long time and I'm super excited about it. I mean mo- other than roads and internet, I mean, that's probably the thing we've we hear the most. I'm having a a lack of entry, uh lack of restaurants and stuff here in town. So yeah, the fact that somebody local here wants to put in some facilities and stuff, I think even if it's a cost to the city, I think it would be definitely well worth it. Because we hear from all our citizens that they want it.
I would.
Most of our citizens. Most of our citizens anyway.
Yeah, I would agree. I live over by there, kind of over by where you're at, Chad. And um, yeah, definitely. I think that's what our citizens want and what I keep hearing as well.
Yeah, I agree as well.
I would uh welcome any kind of commercial development. Uh, and it also gives us the opportunity to make any kind of road improvements to address issues down there at the same time. So.
Yeah, and Webster in that area is pretty rough, so anything we can do to I mean, that, and that's partly, just so the public knows, that's part of the reason why we haven't done some improvements on Webster right there is because we've been expecting development come in there. We don't, like they've said before, we don't want to repave that road and then it'd be torn up six months or a year later.
Yeah.
Um, so, but it is getting pretty rough over there, so I am hoping something moves pretty quickly. So we can get some improvements on that road.
And he did mention there'd be a two cent CID or what they'd be looking for is a two uh CID.
I think, Pat, do you have info on, I know he says he's talked to you before. Do you have any info on what he's looking for?
And are we allowed to share it? That'd be the second thing.
He did uh work with us with some information on some numbers that were supplied when we were first looking at the three options of straightening Webster. Uh, we can uh work with those numbers here. We did receive some on his cost versus our cost, but it looks like um just by internally what we've talked about in the past, that it is a project that the city could look at. And I mean, it's not a crazy amount of money that we couldn't work with something on it.
Well, I know I talked to Tyler Vaughn too at Miami County and he was, he said it was definitely something that they'd be interested in trying to chip in with too. So I think I think it's something we need to at least pursue and try to work with them and see what we can do.
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
I think we, we've met with him multiple times over the last, I don't know, year and a half. Um, at this point, he needs to bring a plan.
Yeah, that's what I was telling him too.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, we're ready.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we've, we've, we have plans to uh what we can do down there. Um, we just have to get something from him that's concrete.
Yeah, cool. Sounds good. I was happy to hear that, so.
Did you have something, Mike?
No.
Okay, he started to say something earlier.
Uh, no, I think it's a great idea to any, anytime we can bring in more restaurants or um just business options would be great because then that keeps revenue and um residents here, which is, I think, a a positive thing.
I would just say, because it's been talked about for, what was it, a year and a half?
Yeah, it's been.
At least.
I I think that, you know, I I think we need to, okay, what are the next steps? So a plan. And somebody needs to follow through with them and we just need to keep the momentum going because my concern is, is the longer you keep talking about something.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta push them a little bit, I think.
Yeah.
To move forward. But I, I mean, from my understanding is he really just wanted to see if we had appetite for it. At least that was the last conversation we had, so.
So then, Lane, does that mean that you, or who, who tell, or is from the council, we're saying, yeah, let's see a plan. Is that, are you, do you take?
We, um, we, meaning Pat and I, have met with him on multiple occasions over the last at least year. Um, and have requested additional information.
Yeah.
Um, we're staff's ready to go. We just have to have something to go with.
Okay.
Um, and I know, well, I'll leave it at that.
I will reach out to him tomorrow.
Okay.
Right, perfect.
Now that, you know, it's a pretty good consensus that, so we'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Cool. Bring us the plan.
Yeah.
Rock and roll.
Yeah, when he showed up tonight, I was like, oh, well, maybe he's ready to do something.
Yeah, no.
So I think, that would be good at the next meeting because I'm all about like following up with stuff. So at the next meeting, I'm going to ask where we're at with it.
Yeah, just bug Pat.
Okay. As you know, I don't mind asking questions.
Mr. Van Houten.
We actually, just real quick, if you don't mind, we actually as internal staff just met on some road alignment down there the other day.
Oh, wow.
So it's, there are some things in the works already in our areas, so I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, it sounded like you had a lot of good things, good conversations you've been working on, so.
Mr. Van Houten.
So I do have an announcement. This will be my last night sitting in this seat, so I'll be stepping down tonight. So um beginning with the mayor, just want to thank you for the opportunity, the appointment originally and your steadfast leadership. Um, secondarily, the two individuals sitting by my side has been just a a master's lesson in leadership and government and uh following the will of people. Um, different perspectives sometimes, but always um prudence in doing the right thing. Uh, third, staff, Ms. Long, Ms. Garrett T., Ms. Dunn, Mr. Massey, Mr. Lyle, Mr. Burton, Planning Commissioner Morse, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you guys have taught me. It's been uh just, it's been humbling and it's been a great opportunity to learn. I knew nothing when I started sitting up here. I still have a lot to learn, but um I had the opportunity back in October to sit in a sub community meeting for uh Can Works. And at that time, we received a grant for, I think, four hundred thousand for sidewalks. It kind of comes full circle being the sidewalk guy. So now I get to sit in the seat for um utilities for transportation committee, um for general government. So uh, or for local government, excuse me, and general budget, which is a a little bit more out of my realm. But uh, the the first three, um, I'm already talking with Mr. Massey about some different projects we have. So I'm looking forward to seeing you all February sixth, giving you some updates. Usually you present to us. Um, I'll have a little brief presentation for you all. So tell you what things we're working on. Um, had the opportunity to meet with uh Secretary of Transportation Calvin Reed today. So I've got some different um um, sent him home with a few different homework items. So um, I'll have some news for you, hopefully. Here are just some updates on things that we're always up here talking about February sixth, so.
You want to update the public, some of the public might not know what your, what your.
I'm sorry. So I'm, I'm sorry. So I was, I'm sorry. I'm, um, so I'm, I'm, I was sworn in as House of Representatives in Kansas Legislature. And so we're two weeks into it now. So, yeah, so I skipped over that part. Yeah, so um, yeah, and if I can keep this, I would really like it.
Yes, you can.
Thanks.
Don't forget us in the, in the big house.
I'll be back. You guys aren't getting rid of me. I just won't be sitting here. I'll be presenting to you occasionally on updates and different grants and whatever else we can do.
Well, I personally want to thank you for serving and uh thank you for all your input over the years and uh, yeah, just appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on. Mr. Feedback.
I have no announcements.
Mr. Grant?
No report.
Mr. Massey?
Uh, no report, other than one hundred ninety-first street. Because I know she's going to ask. Um, uh, basically, it's the same thing. The engineer has submitted, Lampard Neerson has submitted information, a preliminary uh, I don't want to say drawings, but uh, design to K dot uh for one hundred ninety-first and one sixty-nine intersection. Uh, that'll take about thirty days for them to review that. Um, and that'll go back and forth three or four times. We anticipate sometime by August, September timeframe that we'll get final approval from K dot to move forward. The intersection will be designed at that point, so we hope to be able to go out to bid that project, get RFQs, RFPs, um, sometime in the August to September timeframe. And if we're really lucky, we may be able to break ground this year, uh, depending on weather. But worst case scenario, it would be spring of twenty-six, but we're still holding hope that we can have it going out to uh start construction sometime in twenty-five.
Hundred and eighty-third?
Hundred and eighty-third, it's, it's still on hold. Um, we're waiting on uh the developer on that one, so no news on that one.
What's timeline from when you break ground on one hundred ninety-first to when completion?
Are we looking around? Let's say twelve months. Yeah, I was gonna say eight to twelve months, probably.
That's why I figured a year, so.
Yep.
So if we can break ground this year, then possibly by.
It it would be nice if we could break ground. And the nice thing about that is that there's a lead time for any of the signals or polls that we'll, we'll, we'll have that over the winter time. So by the time spring comes around, we should be able to have. Just. I can't top that.
She listen to music back? What's going on?
Mr. Lyle?
Yeah, no report.
Captain Khan?
Um, yeah, and I'll touch on this in a little bit less detail when I give the yearly report, uh, the year-end report. But uh, when I started here, one of the first things I was tasked with was updating our equipment and technology to a modern standard um in keeping with some of the other metro agencies. Um, happy to say that as of this year, with the help of this council staff and really especially Rhonda, um, I have completed all of the tasks and upgraded the technology and equipment at the PD uh, to a point that I think is probably exceeding most of the other metro agencies, if not at least meeting them. So thank you all for allowing us to get that project done. We're actually one of the more technologically and equipment advanced agencies in the area.
Awesome. Cool. Mr. Burton?
I had to ask him a question, sorry. Uh, a shout out to Sharon Mitchell. Today, we were at a meeting. She represented the city uh very good. In this meeting, it was a couple hundred people there and uh, there were two other cities that presented and Sharon did an excellent job, so. And especially when, you know, one of the cities just to our north comes in with five people or six or something like that, and it's just Sharon. So she did a very good job. I just wanted to.
What was the meeting for?
It was put on by Keller Williams and it was an update on the uh area of growth and development and all.
Awesome.
With three cities involved, Alitha, Gardner and us.
Mrs. Abel?
Okay, so with the SS four A, we're going to have our first advisory committee meeting. Um, that's going to be on Monday, the twenty-eighth. Uh, that's going to be from noon to one in the four oh one event space. Uh, we've got fifteen to twenty people. Hopefully that will be there uh representing different facets of the community. Um, we even have a high school student that is uh wanting to go into the engineering program. I was able to get connected uh with um Leah, who is from the school district and does the professional education program there uh for the Spring Hill. So her and I are doing leadership Spring Hill together. I had connected with her to find somebody and she found me somebody and it's perfect. So um Kyler is his name. I don't remember his last name and I believe he's a senior. Uh, so he'll be there on Monday. Um, so we'll have some great uh conversation. I'll be sending out um some detailed questions for people to kind of ponder over the weekend before the meeting about what safety looks like in the community and some other things that we would like to accomplish with this program. So um, I'll give you guys a follow-up on that as we continue to move through this process. Um, the other thing I wanted to do was to give an update on, I guess, the hundred ninety-first street. The big thing that we're gonna um be tasked with is creating a theme with, this will be, you know, a really good opportunity for us to look at style within um that four door at that traffic signal. So um, hopefully in the next meeting, I'll be doing a discussion item for you. Um, giving you some pretty pictures of what I think that um those traffic signals should look like. Um, just to kind of get your feedback to make sure we're all on the same page as far as what uh that's going to look like. So again, that's going to help progress this uh project a little bit further along. Hopefully, we can get something that won't have a long lead time because that is going to break our project. A lot of the stuff, especially since COVID, um, those traffic signal poles, uh, those have had a long lead time and have been on backorder. So it's all I've got.
Awesome. Thank you. Oh, I did have a question real quick before your question. Um, when did they submit, you said the, I think it's maybe for Lane, you said they submitted the, the, all the paperwork uh Lampard Neerson did. Was that this week?
No.
Because I know you said thirty days, so I'm trying to figure.
I want to say right before the last meeting, if I remember correctly.
So it's like two weeks ago.
Say roughly two weeks ago.
All right, so thirty days from two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would say, what, were you in the last, say, the first week or so of February, maybe second? Um, you know, whenever K dot can turn that around, so.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, Mike, I had a question and I, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you when it was your turn. Are you allowed to give an update of where we're at with the police chief position? Thank you.
Um, and Monique, should feel free to jump in if I say something wrong. Um.
Or feel free to play music or.
Yeah, play music. Whatever song you'd like. Uh, we're, we're currently receiving applications for that. Um, I believe it's, what's the date? Is it February?
Eighth.
Eighth. I was gonna say ninth. I was off a day. Uh, February eighth is the final day. Uh, we're, we're currently receiving applications and going through those and um, looking at the qualifications and we will be providing, I think we've already provided some of the information to the mayor and here shortly, we'll provide it probably to um, rest of the governing body to look at. Uh, so I, I would anticipate in the next couple of weeks, we will have candidates that we would want to interview and we would be setting those up probably towards the probably the end of February then.
And I forgot, you may have said this, but um, is somebody from the department, the PD, actually going to be on an interview?
Yes, I think, what we're intending right now is to probably have two or three different um groups, committees. Um, one would be uh the mayor and a couple governing body members, probably myself. Uh, the other one would be uh other professionals within the, the region, uh, maybe a couple of police chiefs or captains or something like that. And then we would have input from our interim chief back here and probably the sergeants would be a third committee.
Okay.
And have, have input. Each, each candidate would interview with, with each group.
Cool.
And we are having applications come from kind of all over the country, so.
Uh, we are.
Surprised me a little bit. Some coming from, yeah, long, long ways, all the way to the complete opposite side of the country.
Literally from coast to coast.
Yeah.
So.
Everything going okay, Adam? Okay, good.
I'm good, yeah. I don't get a lot of sleep. I have a newborn.
I had a question back for the stoplight we were talking about. Um, what type of pole is that? They put it at one hundred and sixty-fifth. I hadn't seen one like that on the main highway.
I saw that.
It's like a different style.
Are you talking about the black poles?
Yeah.
By the new Walmart facility?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's probably.
Is that kind of what you were talking about?
That's what I'm talking about, is like a black powder coated.
Okay.
Uh, pole. I think it's going to blend in a little bit better. It's going to present a little bit more style. It's going to be better than some of the, the steel poles.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so there's a lot of different options. So we've been going around the city to collect some pictures of some of the areas that we like.
Okay.
Styles that we like. And there's a whole gambit of, you know, whether we want to go crazy with some of the architectural features or if we want to go plain jane, budget, friendly type.
It, so I, I would ask if the governing body has been anywhere uh and seen light poles or fixtures. Uh, an example would be um by city center. They have a kind of a wavy looking one. I don't know that we need to do that, but um, you know, something that's more than just a wood pole or a galvanized pole. Uh, since that's such a high visibility area for us, uh, it, we may want to distinguish something from other than being on the highway that it, that says, hey, you're, you're now in Spring Hill, so.
And something that could be replicated if we end up doing several intersections.
Yeah, that'd be my question. Yeah, if we, we spend a lot more, you wouldn't want to spend a ton if we're planning on putting a bunch of stoplights in, but.
No.
And, and I think that's part of what Allison will be bringing back to you.
Okay.
You know, what the, what the cost is for just the, the plain ones versus the, the step up and then that way, uh, the governing body can make an informed decision on it.
Yeah, it just reminded me when you said that because I'm like, yeah, that one's kind of weird. It doesn't have like a big overhang and.
It will. They haven't, they haven't put the arms.
Is that what, okay, I was like, yeah, it's, well, the lights are on that pole too, which I thought was weird.
Well, they'll have the, they'll have the ground one and then if you look at it, there's a square on the side of it and a square on the front of it. So it'll have arms.
I, I think the lights maybe are for, I'm not sure if that would be just the.
That's for the south.
North, southbound traffic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, when you said that, I was like, oh, okay, that's kind of what you're talking about, right?
Madam Clerk?
Representative Van Houten, congratulations on your new position at the State House. And it has been a pleasure working with you and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And it is our tradition that a city councilman that is ending their term receives a city flag. So I will be sure and get you your city flag. And it was kind of neat because I was going through and updating all the new representatives and senators that are our representatives and they already had you in there and your photos, so it was, it was pretty neat. So I wish you all the best. It's neat to have a, a local representative uh in Topeka, so I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I also want to say congrats to Senator Adam Thomas, who's former representative, former state representative. Uh, he's from our area and um he's now our senator, so that's congrats to him as well. So it's kind of, kind of cool that we have two guys from here that are, one is the senator and one is the rep, so. Pretty cool. Mrs. Dunn?
Um, I'll piggyback on, on uh Glenda as well. You're going to be missed. You, we have such a good, strong council and lots of questions. And I'll tell you, I remember really early meetings. And I'll tell you, I remember really early meetings with you and you were working so hard to understand what was the government and what it was doing, to hear the confidence you have in the work you're gonna be doing in Topeka, congratulations, I look forward to seeing what you do. Tonight, we've talked about a lot of projects and Councilman Yang, you came right in and said, I like that project and everything, but I want to stay focused on South Street, let's get sidewalks in, that's really important. We know we love 191st Streets light coming in, but the group of us are gonna be meeting this next week and looking at all the projects, are they moving forward, what are they doing, how are we funding them, what are we paying for? What are grants paying for and all those different things? And so just wanted you to know that those things are happening, where we're gonna look at prioritization and then come back and most likely report on a progress update and things like that, so you're aware that those things are moving along as well.
And I think that's one big thing about the Safe Streets for All, is that gets involvement from everybody and sets priorities that us as a community want on where we want those sidewalks and everything to be fixed or done.
Yes, and we've received millions of dollars in notifications on grants and it's kind of hard to keep track. And they have a lot of similar names and things like that, so we look forward to getting our priorities where they need to be, making sure we're committing funding where it needs to be and all of those things. I also wanted to point out something talking about grants. Adam, thank you for the kind words. A lot of the technology we got to buy came from ARPA funds and so that was somebody else's tax dollars that got to help us out and I'm glad we could use it for the police department, public works and different things to get the things they need.
Mrs. Jones?
The only thing that I wanted to say is that in, in reference to the comment about focusing on the priorities and stuff, sometimes we do have to make some improvements on things that may not necessarily be the hot topic, like the streets and the lights and things, particularly with the dam, when you guys approve that, so that's great. But had we not approved it, I would have been raising concerns to Lane, because I'm like, from a risk perspective, we need to address those things, because we want to make sure that we do our due diligence from insurance and everything like that, so, thank you.
Mr. Spear?
No report.
Boom. I will say with Lane, I liked your update that you sent out this week. I wouldn't be opposed to even maybe having Kristen post something on like our Facebook with some of those updates too. I don't know if I've seen one recently, but I really liked how you put kind of, this is what we're working on. So yeah, those updates I think would be good for the community.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna try to get those out to the governing body. We're gonna try to do weekly, sometimes it's a single-
Yeah, weekly stuff.
It may be once a month or twice a month, but we'll definitely try to get that out. And as we start, I think we've got a good group here and as we start getting into these projects, we have a lot of projects going. We're gonna try to keep the information flowing, we've changed the format on trying to bring things to the governing body first. In the past, it was, it was kind of more of the opposite, you apply for them, we want you involved from the beginning of the project. And in some cases, that's simply saying, hey, we're gonna apply for a grant, do you have any issues with that? We're trying to get the feedback from you, one of the things I didn't say, but we've been talking about internally is possibly having some type of retreat for the governing body, maybe a half day or a full day retreat. So if you can think of days that might work for you, or days that don't work for you. And I think a lot of that could be, part of the day would be budget discussions, but mainly, you know, what type of projects and what vision does the governing body want for the next one to five years? And I think that would help us guide staff on budget decisions, CIP. We pretty well know what you want, but there may be things that we haven't heard that are a priority for the, for the community or for the governing body, so if, let me know, reach out to Glenda, myself, or you know, whoever. Let us know what days you have available and we'll try to get something set up with somebody to come in here and kind of guide us through that process. I don't know that we need to do two or three days long, but we may, may do one and then come back and have a follow-up.
Is there a beach involved or?
Yes, we could.
No, I think my big thing is that we have really high taxes and we know that and it's just part of where we're at in our life cycle, right? But I think if people know the projects we're working on and we get that out there and they know kind of the progress, there's a lot less heartburn, at least for me too, like when I hear, okay, well, we're getting stuff done. I, you know, I'm always kind of the one that's like, ah, I don't want to spend money. But at the same time, when we see completion, you feel better about spending the money. And so I know we're in the infant stages of a lot of these projects, but hearing about the progress, talking about the fun stuff and other stuff we gotta talk about, like the dam, that's, well, a lot of people enjoy the lake, so it's, you know, it's important. But like I said, it's, I think the transparency part is, is a big piece, because when I start to talk to people, people complain to me, I'm like, well, we're doing this, this and this, like, oh, I didn't even know that, and I'm like, well, yeah, it's because, I don't think we're great at getting that out there. So I'd like to work on that, I think, as a priority, so.
Yeah, even if, even if we could post, post something once a month, kind of like we, kind of like we do the newsletter or maybe even possibly in the newsletter, but just post, hey, this is our upcoming projects, this is what we're, what we're working on, just to kind of, like I say, even if it was once a month, just so the public-
Oh yeah, once a month, I think is-
This is, this is what we're, or even maybe even once a quarter, but just so people know what's, what's in the works and what we're trying to accomplish.
I know for me, I see newsletter, I'll kind of glance at it, but if I saw one of just like current projects for the city, that would probably catch my eye more than anything else, keep it separate from-
Rhonda asked me a question and I believe I sent you that information about, that we, that we had received the rail corridor elimination grant.
Yeah.
So that, that'll be coming back to the governing body at some point, once we receive the paperwork from the federal government. And that, that's exciting, because that's the first step, we have, always, study, 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 that's what we have to do. But this provides the study that allows us to go to the next step to say, how do we correct rail crossings within our community? And as we grow, that's gonna be a growing concern, because we have crossings that we need to deal with, 169 Highway, and then a half mile away, we have a crossing at a railroad track. So we're trying to get all these blocks in place. Some of these projects could take two years to ten years to get through the study phase to implementation phase. So it's, none of them are short-term, they, they just take a long time to get to that point. But I just wanted to make sure I had sent that out to you.
Well, I think what's nice about like, the gentleman that came tonight about that development, a lot of people complain, say, you guys block it or whatever, we're not blocking anything, we're waiting on him. I think that's important to know too, we're very receptive to all that, so anybody who wants to work with us, we're definitely ready and willing. Sometimes it's on them and we can't control what they do, so at this point, the ball's in his court. So that's a good thing to know too, I think, to get out there and say, hey, we've had, you know, interest in this and we're ready to work with them, so.
And we, we do hear, I think all of us hear that a lot.
Yeah, because I hear it all the time, you guys block whatever, yeah.
Yeah, why won't the city let a McDonald's come, or why won't the city this, we're like, we want them to come, bring it on.
Yeah.
The number of restaurants that I've blocked is zero.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, so that's, I hear it all the time, they're like, you guys are not letting this stuff in, I'm like, no, that's not the case.
No, it's far the opposite, we chase the restaurants and businesses.
We're even willing to, to give a little, to get some, so.
Alright, with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number one. Do you guys need a break, like a bathroom break, five minute break?
Say add five minutes onto this?
Yeah.
I was already gonna ask you to add five, so fifteen minutes, so do twenty total, yeah.
I move the city council recess into executive session for twenty minutes for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6, so the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:27 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session, persons to be in attendance are the following. Lane Massey, City Administrator, Spencer Lyles, City Attorney, Jacob Spear, Director of Public Works and Allison Abel, City Engineer.
Second.
Got a motion, second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Post. Motion carries five zero zero.
I knew it wasn't very big. It has red stenciling and it's probably from the 30s and it's just perfect.
All right, welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect the governing body reconvened open meeting at 9:27 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number two.
Uh, move the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes. Uh, to discuss matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 754319B1. Of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at nine forty-two PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session pursuant to the attendance following Lane Massey, City Administrator, and Spencer Lous, City Attorney.
Second. Got a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. All right, guys, welcome back, everybody. Uh, let's see. Let the record reflect the governing body reconvened open meeting at approximately nine forty-two. No votes were taken or decisions made during this executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Have a great night, everyone.